Good evening, everyone. I'm Kim Curtis, President of the Grand View Chamber of Commerce, and we're very glad to have you joining us this evening for our Grand View C4 School District Candidates Forum. We have some folks here to introduce, so I'll make those introductions and then turn it over to our moderator. First, we have our Superintendent, Dr. Kenny Rodriguez. Kenny's been leading the school district since July 2016. Two years before that, he was Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, and he's done a fantastic job for the district, and we're excited to keep it going here this evening. Also with us, we have Sandy Kessinger, who is Chairman, or I should say, a woman, of the Funding Our Schools Future Committee, which we're going to hear just a little bit about at the end of the Candidates Forum. Sandy's also on the Board of the Chamber, Past Chairman of the Chamber, and she's VP of Commercial Banking for Bank of Blue Valley. Joining us also tonight, representing South Kansas City and Martin City CID, is Vicki Walgas, President of the South Kansas City Chamber. And my counterpart, June I collaborate on a number of things. In fact, we've been on a couple of Zoom meetings already today, so I think this is like the third, maybe. And then finally, we have our moderator, Rachel Casey. She's going to introduce the candidates and give us the rules. Rachel actually served on the Grand View Board of Education from 2008 until 2013, before her daughters graduated from Grand View High School. She was very involved in band and theater boosters. Currently, Rachel is Executive Director of the Community Assistance Council, which is an emergency nonprofit that serves Hickman Mills Center and the KCMO part of the Grand View School District. She and her husband Jonathan live in South Kansas City. And I know when she was a school board member, we worked together very closely. So I knew she would do a great and fair job today of bringing us our candidates. So Rachel, thank you for being a part of our group.
Thank you, Kim. And thank you, everybody, for being with us tonight. I'm really interested personally, listening to what our candidates have to say. I want to let you know that there are now three candidates for two open positions. We received the word this afternoon that Andrew Rexroth said that he may be moving out of the district. So he has declined, although his name will still be on the ballot, he has declined to participate in tonight's Candidates Forum. And as I introduce the other three candidates who are online with us, I'll let you know that after I quickly introduce the three of them, we will give each of them four minutes to present their history, experience, and anything important that they'd like to share about why they are interested in serving the Grand View C4 School District. So our candidates in alphabetical order are Charles, or Chuck Cornforth, Leonard Green, and Cara Wardlow. So we will start with, if you don't mind me calling you Chuck. If you would like to take your four minutes and tell us a little bit about yourself, what you'd like to share.
All right, very good. Don't know if it'll take four minutes, but we'll try to use it. Again, my name is Charles, or most folks know me as Chuck Cornforth. I'm a forever Grand View resident. Was a graduate of Grand View High School, as well as my wife, and put two sons through Grand View Schools. Work history-wise, worked for the Kmart Corporation for about 10 years. I then started in the school busing industry and worked for, what at the time was called a company named KAL, who contracted to do school busing for the Kansas City Missouri School District. They were subsequently bought by Ryder Transportation, continued working with them. So about 10 years in working with Kansas City School District and doing the school busing. Then moved to working in Topeka, Kansas, for Topeka, for a contractor for Topeka Public Schools for a little over a year. Then transferred to a company called Transpar. Worked as an independent contractor, working for the City of Chicago's Public Schools for a little over a year there also. Opportunity came up here at home, and I applied for Director of Transportation for the Grand View School District and was hired in July of 1997. I've retired since then and retired at the end of December 2015 and retired from the Grand View School District. About a year later, there was vacancy on the Board. I applied, applied to fill that vacancy and was selected and have been on the Board ever since December of 2016. This will be my first candidate appearance as the other elections or openings that came during that time period. There were no one stepped up to put in a candidate's freeze for the school board. I think that's unfortunately, over the years that I've seen, has been one of our issues is getting qualified interested persons, those that care about the kids in the school district, to step up to take a seat at the school board or take a seat working directly with the school district. That's one of the reasons that I kind of stepped forward to do that. I, at that point, was retired and had the time to do it. Had some 18-plus years' experience with the Grand View School District, or I could say even more years than that. As again, I graduated from Grand View Schools and my children both graduated from Grand View Schools. I don't know how, I'm not running a stopwatch here, Rachel, so I don't know how much time I have left.
Probably about a minute.
About a minute, okay. So that's my background, mostly has been in management and carry a number of decades to the table with those experiences. I'll bow to the next.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Leonard, would you like to share some of your background, history, and interests with us?
I sure will. Name is Leonard Green. I've been here in Grand View for about 22, 23 years or so. Have two kids that have graduated both through, have gone through the Grand View School District. Quite proud of both of them. One's working with at-risk kids, another one's a Marine, just left after eating me out of house and home for the last three weeks. But still happy to have them and see them. I've run a number of small companies, enterprises. I'm currently working at the Federal Reserve Bank, Kansas City. Kansas City as a software engineer. Have been in IT pretty much my entire life. Love technology. What got me into the actual role of school board member back in my married days, one thing that has been consistent is that I've always believed in giving back to the community. So my ex said that I should look into running for school board. And then the more I looked into it, the more I kind of really got into it because it was a way to work with the kids. It was a way to give back and provide, hopefully, a good basis for our future. That was back in, I believe, 2000. I was just recently awarded my 15th-year service pin, which kind of caught me off guard because I thought it was only 12. So I guess time flies when you're having fun. With that, 15 years of experience on the Board, I still find myself learning stuff daily, if not through talking to Kenny and some of the other cabinet members just dealing with everyday experiences. I look back over the years and over these last couple of weeks, been asked a lot of questions about platform and about what my focus would be and what I believe. We've seen a lot of great progress under Kenny. We saw great progress before, but we've seen some major progress. It's not where we want to be, but we have seen the progress. So my main focus would be continuing with that, giving Kenny the leeway and doing what we need to do to make sure that it happens. Our end is making sure that he has the resources, the freedom, but we also must, you know, be good stewards about what we do and manage our time and not necessarily get into the weeds. So I've worked very hard to learn what needs to be done, how to make sure that Kenny has everything that he needs or whoever, you know, is working in that realm, and try and keep that straight. But my main focus has always been and will continue to be the kids. Whatever it takes to give our kids a better opportunity, not only to just get through, but to succeed and excel because it's time. So I don't want to, wait a minute, I think I still have one more minute. So I'm going to share something with you that I shared earlier. When I talk about progress, one of the things I always use is what I call my 10-foot rule, which some people think is kind of harsh, but reality sometimes is harsh. And that is, you may have, say you have a 10-foot gap that you have to jump. Even if you're jumping now three feet and you have 100% increase and you're now jumping six feet, that is excellent progress. But if you're still not making that 10-foot jump, you don't want to attempt it just yet because you're going to come up short. So we have made great progress. It is awesome, but we're not where we want to be. We know that, we're working on it. And I think that should be and what we're going to focus on moving forward because we have to keep that momentum going. And that's what I plan on focusing on. And I didn't run out of time, so thank you.
Thank you, Leonard. Cara, it's your turn to go now.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate you being flexible with my travel today. My name is Cara Wardlow. I'm obviously a member of Grand View Zerry Community. I've lived in the community for 13 years. This October, I have two children in the district. I have a husband who coaches and teaches in the district. You know, my why is I have a strong desire to support our families in our district, being a parent and family person in the district myself. There's been some great strides made, strides made to make Grand View an amazing district, and I want to continue to push these opportunities for our kids. I'm here as a voice for the students, the teachers, the staff, the coaches, and most importantly, the wonderful people that are in our community. I'm very much about what is best for our community as a whole, and I have a heart for the kids. Our kids are amazing. They face such adversity and they deserve 100% the best that we have to give them. So I look forward to this potential opportunity. I love the community and I want to be a part of the continued work. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Cara, thank you very much. So just as a reminder, behind the curtain is our fearless chamber staff person, who, as you noticed, was giving you the countdown. And so I'm sure it will continue to show you that two minutes and then one minute and maybe also 30 seconds, I'm not sure. She'll let you know. And so for these questions, we will have two minutes each. We will start off with Chuck again, and then we'll rotate through, starting with who we start with. So the first question of the evening is, what do you think is the Grand View C4 School District's biggest hidden asset? Please explain why you think that is.
Well, our asset is our staff. I don't think it's hidden. They, we have a great staff, great staff of teachers, great staff of classified employees. For those that don't know, that includes our custodians and maintenance workers, school bus drivers, secretaries, folks that do the heavy lifting in there. We've got a great bunch of teachers. One of the things that I prioritize have for the last couple of years and will continue to is that we keep developing our folks. Dr. Rodriguez and his administration have been doing a wonderful job since he stepped in as Superintendent, providing professional development. I think we need to continue that, and we've done a lot, changed the track a little bit over the last year with the COVID, doing a lot of extra PD, professional development with our teachers and staff to know how to work in this COVID age. So I'm a big supporter of that and will continue to support that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now Leonard, same question. What do you think is Grand View School District's biggest hidden asset? And please explain.
Okay, I'm along with Chuck. I don't necessarily know if they're hidden, but to piggyback on what he said, you know, of course, our staff, the students. But I think the biggest thing would be looking at the relationships that have been built within the district. I know that's been one of the big things Kenny has worked on. And to have a Superintendent that is out in the schools to build and work on their relationships. I mean, he's on Twitter. Whatever social media is out there, any type of communications, he's out there. And that helps build the belief in the community, that helps build the belief in the school, and you see the pride. I mean, when you talk about we are Grand View, it's like you see it everywhere now. You see bumper stickers, you see it on shirts, you hear people saying it. And I think that is such a huge plus because Grand View has been hit with so much negative press at one point in time. I mean, it's like you mentioned, you lived in Grand View and people look at you strange. Now, I live in Grand View and quite happy about it and, you know, spout off some of the things that have happened from the kids down at Union Station, the things they've done, the track team, basketball team, all different types. So that pride, that relationship basis that has built the pride, I think that is probably one of, is one of our biggest assets.
All right, thank you. And Cara?
Yes, I agree on all chords, teachers and students. But I think the number one hidden asset that comes to mind for me right off the bat is the relationships that have been formed over this, not even the pandemic, but just in general in school. This is bigger than school. It's teaching young men how to be men outside of, once they graduate. Young women, how to be women, how to manage checkbooks, how to ask for help. So for me, hands down, it's the relationship and that culture that's being built that not everybody sees, but is there. So that's my response to that question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the second question, and for this one, we'll start with Leonard, is is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the Board of Education?
The main issue that motivates me is making sure that our kids have opportunities, not only the ones that I didn't have, but to take advantage of everything that's coming their way, whether it be technology, whether it be being able to travel and learn and grow, but just being able to take advantage of opportunities and get past this ideal of just getting through and actually excelling. I've noticed throughout, not just Grand View, but just many communities, kids are just looking just to get out of school, to get to the next level. I would love to see them start looking at, how do we excel? How do we move to that next level so that we don't have to struggle? You know, with some of the programs that we have, kids can come out of high school with, you know, just about an associate's degree if they really want to. And we'd like to see more of that happen or come out with a trade. So the more opportunities are presented to them, the more we show them that they can do, I believe that they will actually do it. And I believe that's on us as the adults to show them the way to, hey, you can, you can take this and run. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. And Cara, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the Board of Education?
Absolutely. For me, it comes back down to the kids, right? They face such adversity and I just wholeheartedly believe they deserve 100% the best of what we have to offer. And kind of piggybacking off what Leonard's saying, he's absolutely correct. Providing more opportunities, whatever those may look like, right? Maybe it's, I didn't want to go to college, or I want to be a tradesperson, or I want to be a over-the-road truck driver. You know, whatever that may be, providing these kids the opportunity to get there. However the look and feel of that is, that's on us to provide. So again, opportunities, absolutely 100%. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Chuck, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the Board?
No, as I stated, one of the reasons I'm on the Board, I guess, is I applied to do so after vacancy became available or, and there wasn't a great upswell of folks to step forward to serve on the school board. I think it's a position that can do a lot for the kids in the school district, can move the district forward. I agree with Cara and Leonard that to move forward to whatever ends our kids can reach to, that's what we're there to provide them for. We have in the past had some financial issues. Some years ago, we have gotten through those. There were some rough times where we had to do some cutting of staff and services. We have replaced those and moving forward, we hope we can even do better than we did, than we were doing before. I understand there may be some talk of questions one and two after our little forum here. So I'll leave that, leave that to those folks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we are down to, we're moving right along. Question number three. What particular, this is, sorry, with Cara. What particular experiences or skills have prepared you to serve as a board member?
I'm a parent of two kiddos that obviously are in the district. So I think that in lieu, my oldest, well, he's in sixth grade currently. So I think that in lieu of just kind of how, understanding the dynamics of how the school district works and the people that are in place there has definitely helped me in that aspect. Also too, I am in corporate education. So just being in that role corporately and kind of like the medical software part of corporate education and interacting with physicians and nurses and other people in the healthcare industry and just having those strong leadership skills, open-mindedness, flexibility to be receptive of feedback, I think has definitely put me in a good place to be able to entertain this role. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Leonard. Yeah, I'm sorry, this is my place for a second. What particular experiences or skills have prepared you to serve as a board member?
Well, I could fall back on the easy one to say, you know, 15 years of experience. But what I'm going to say is that from my time working in business on my own, from working at the various places as a consultant and working over at the Fed in our team concept, the one thing that I've learned over these 15 years, when you come on the Board, it is a team effort. The Board only has one voice, and that is all together. I've seen where we've had people come on the Board and you have, you know, an agenda to do something or move something or make something happen. But the only way it happens is if we come in and work together as a team. So keeping that in mind, keeping the understanding of working as a group and making sure that we keep the focus of the kids and their benefit right in front of us. I think when I add those together and keeping that as a focus, as well as being humble, because as I told someone else, I'm not looking for any type of accolades or recognition or anything like that. I'm here for exactly the purpose of benefiting the kids. So with that in mind, there are no alternatives, there are no ulterior motives. It's just about moving forward. So that means sometime you have to eat some crow or bite your tongue and work together as a team. So when I look at all that, I think that's what helps and provides me with the basis for moving forward as a board member and continues to fuel me, actually.
Okay.
Right.
You went on mute, Rachel.
Rachel, you're muted.
Sorry, I hit the button. I think I got myself on board. I know, I have one job to do. Chuck, did I ask you that question?
No.
Okay. Your turn. Particular experiences or skills do you bring to the school board?
Again, I have, you know, quite a bit of background with the school district. Most of my career has been in management. I think I've become, over the years, a skilled listener, which I think is very important. I agree with Leonard. Don't have an agenda to do anything particular. I'd like to hear and listen to all opinions, all the facts, and then make a decision. Although I'm not in that position now, you know, is management experience I've had, I think that puts me in a good stead to sit on the Board, listen. When I was in those positions, I loved to do training. And I kind of think the Board still has a function of doing training now. And again, I really support the training we do do with with our, with our staff, teachers, and particularly, particularly, I think I'm a good listener.
Thank you very much. So our next question is, in what school district or community activities or organizations have you been involved? So here, we will start with Leonard.
Recently, the most thing I can think of is visiting the robo-competition. I can't even remember the team name. I just remember seeing the kids so excited. Actually, because their team won, I forgot which division it was, but they were excited. And I think I was more excited for them, just watching them. And I didn't even see the competition because I had to go to work, but I was able to stop by for a little bit. That, the, oh goodness, was it the Battle of the Brains? Or I can't even remember the Union Station event, but that was amazing. Trying to think whatever else. The A+ Program, I love, adore, and will continue to support as long as I'm around because I think that's a huge opportunity for the kids. And the most recent thing, and I always get it wrong, but I'm hoping Kenny will fill in the blanks, but it's working with the Real World Project or, I can't, I think it's called Real World. But basically, it's promoting those things that I talked about, where I know all kids aren't necessarily going to go to college. So it's presenting them with the skill set that they can use and move forward in and actually get, not only gain full employment, but more than a living wage. So that is huge. That's with the Kaufman Foundation. Like I said, I always get the name messed up, but most people know what I'm talking about. So that would be it for me. Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you, Leonard. So now we will go to Chuck. And what school district or community activities, organizations have you been involved?
Well, over the years, I've probably served on about every committee there is in the school district. Safety, Grand View 10, Grand View 8, our meet and confer groups with staff, health and wellness. Served a time with, as a liaison with Two Gap for a year. And community-wise, a number of years ago, I held a Board position on the Ray, Rain Tree Ridge Home Association. That's kind of hitting the bucket. The rest of my time was taken up with school district business. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And Cara, would you like to address, what school district or community activities or organizations have you been involved?
Sure, of course. So my kiddos were students at Belvedere Elementary. So pretty much anything, their field day, muffins with moms, donuts for dads, I helped volunteer with. My older son was part of the robotics team at Belvedere. So I helped with, you know, what I could there, supporting them at competitions and things of that nature. And then, as I kind of stated earlier, my husband is a coach and a teacher at the high school. And all athletes, students at the high school lovingly refer to me as Mama Wardlow. We pretty much, any event at the high school we're at, whether it's basketball or track or, you know, football or whatever. So we, I support the kids in any and every way I can. And again, they lovingly refer to me as Mama Wardlow, which is an endearment that I absolutely just take to heart because it's, I'm just there for them to support them and the support they need. So it's a great feeling. And to Leonard's point earlier, there are no accolades with this. It is straight love for the kids and it's just a great feeling. So thank you. It is straight love for the kids and it's just a great feeling. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Cara, we're going to start with you on this one. What is a school board member's role and responsibility? And how is that different from administrators or the administration?
So I think our responsibility as school board, I mean, you know, Leonard kind of mentioned it earlier, it's a team environment. So I think that our role is to help and allocate, try to provide the best opportunities we can for everybody in the district. Teachers, staff, students, right? And that's a team approach. And so we, it's kind of an intake, outtake type of feedback is how I kind of look at that. Different from an administrative perspective, because I mean, you know, traditionally, my thought of the board is we're not making decisions on the fly like Dr. Rodriguez may have to make, right? Something that needs to acutely be decided today. Maybe, you know, that's an administrative type task. It may be policies, procedures, you know, towards that kind of feedback. Where the board to me is a little different type of atmosphere in that regard. So that's kind of how I differ between the two personally in my head.
All right. Thank you very much. And Chuck, what is a school board member's role and responsibility and how does that differ from administration?
Well, it's, it's true. The day-to-day operation of the school district is run by the superintendent and his staff. School board is here for governance, setting policies, giving direction. We have some constraints by state government and federal government of what we can and cannot do. But we, we set, we set directions. We give overall visions and goals. Again, like Leonard said, the, it's not just a one-person voice, it's a voice of all seven members. So just governance and direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then Leonard, same question. A school board member's role and responsibility and how does that differ from administration?
Hey, they took all of the good answers. So I'm going to make, no, I'm not going to make anything up. Anybody that knows me knows this is one of the things I talk about all the time because it's so easy to get the two mixed up. And our job as board members, we only have one employee and that's the superintendent. So our job is to hire a superintendent, manage the budget, make sure that we're a good steward of the budget of the money. But we also have people that handle that and to administer policy and deal with any type of issues, whether it be student, whether it be staff. And that's, I mean, it's a real high level and the easiest way to look at it, think of it as almost like a corporate environment where you have, everybody at the top does not necessarily know everyday decisions that are made. They set the direction, they set the goals, they set the vision, and then they set their people that they trust in motion to make it happen. And when it doesn't, that's when it comes back to us because we have to monitor, review along the way and make sure it's going along the way that we want it to. And if it's not, then that's on us to call it back and say, hey, superintendent, things not going away. Why is that? Let's work it out. So, long story short, we handle the higher level vision, direction, and let the generals handle the troops in the battle. If that makes sense.
Thank you very much. So this is the last of our actual list of questions. And it's, it's still pretty broad though. And the question is, and we'll start with Chuck, is why you should be elected to the Board of Education?
Okay. Thank you, Rachel. Well, I think I have the experience both professionally and particularly with the Grandview School District. I hope I've shown over the last four, four plus years as a board member that I do do the things I've said, I listen, contemplate, have discussions with staff and administration, speak as one voice on the board and have a vision of moving forward. We haven't, haven't mentioned it yet, but we have one very important goal that's been set for a couple of years now that we have a goal of having all students on grade level. Little setbacks this year with the pandemic, a very lofty goal. As Leonard said, we have several goals that are, they're high priority to us. It's, it's not an event happening, it's a process. We have had some, you know, downtime with the COVID. Hopefully, coming in fall, that we'll be able to get everybody back in seats in school in person. I'm not a hundred percent sure that's going to happen, but is certainly a goal and a priority of mine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now Cara, if you can let us know, why should you be elected to the school board?
Absolutely. So for me, I'm a new bubbly, energetic personality. I bring a new set of eyes and new set of ears for the simple aspect of just a different person, perspective, right? So I think that's what probably my main strengths are, as well as the fact that I'm in corporate education. I know a little different than traditional, traditional speaking of education, but that is a strength as well. I've played team sports my entire life. I know very well how to work as a team and the dynamics of a team. And I fully understand and appreciate the one voice that we would be providing as the board. So all of those things rolled up in one, make me a really good candidate in my opinion. But also too, just my love for the community, my love for the kids. These kids are amazing. Gosh, I, I miss them in this pandemic because we don't get the interaction we used to, but our kids are just simply amazing. So all of that rolled up, I think, puts me in a good seat here. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're a little ahead of schedule. Kim, shall we go on to closing candidates' comments or do we want to add anything else in?
You know, we could certainly tell people to put questions in the chat if they've got specific questions. But we could go ahead and, and start the closing comments and then if there are questions, we'll, we'll bring them some.
I see, I saw two questions in the chat. So how about we go ahead and give you two minutes each, starting with Leonard, for your, you know, anything else you would like to say? And then we can bring up the two questions that I saw in the chat.
Okay. My closing comments would be kind of piggybacking on the last question. And that was, why do I think, or what makes me a good board member? One of the things that I've always felt is that by being one of the few men of color on the board, that adds a very needed, necessary voice to a lot of issues that come about. Not saying that we've had issues before, but when you don't recognize or don't acknowledge certain things, it makes a huge statement. And in the way things are going today, we need to be aware of any and all because our kids are right in the middle of that. So I think that adds a huge voice and perspective to the board that fortunately we've had for a number of different years, but to continue that I think is a huge step. And I mean, much like Cara said, I love the community. I love the community. I love the kids. Just love the fact that we're moving forward. You know, when you've been with something through the hard times, the harsh times, the news, now to see things growing and moving is just makes us walk around with your chest stuck out like, yeah, Grandview. Thank you.
All right, Cara, your closing comments, anything else in general that you'd like to add?
I just want to tell people to get out and vote, whatever that look and feel is, right? Use your right to vote. It's an amazing experience. Would I love your support? Absolutely. But I mean, get out and vote for who you think is the best candidate that's going to represent you, right? So I, I think, and I speak to a lot of, you know, the high school kids or kids older that have graduated that, you know, want to vote. Get out there and vote. And all I would say is just that I'm a, I love, I think you guys are getting the gist. I love this community. I love our kids. I love our teachers and our staff and everybody involved. They're amazing. They're amazing people. And there is a pride thing with Grandview. I don't know if you can see my little zip up here. I wear Grandview stuff everywhere. I have such pride. I'm in South Carolina this week, or I mean, I'm sorry, Georgia. I'm in Georgia this week. I have such pride in just saying Grandview. It's just, it's a prideful thing for me and it's, and it's a love I have. So I'll close with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Chuck, your last couple of minutes of general. And then I see we have a few questions. So we'll keep this moving quickly.
Okay. I agree with Leonard and, and I think it's broader than that. Our current school board is a very diverse group. Again, like Leonard said, has been for several years. Each of us bring something to the table. I think I bring a longevity or I think I'm the oldest board member on there right now. So I bring some historical perspective to, to, to the, to the table for the, for the city and for the school district. I, I think again, I'll stand on the last four and a half years that I've been on the board. I hope I've done a good job. I would like to continue that, that track. As, as we've all stated, we've had some downtimes, had some ups. We're on a, on a good trajectory currently and would like to see that through. We started some initiatives that I would like to at least, at least finish. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. I, I'm going to take the question that just disappeared from the Q and A. That as a school board member, you might be approached in the grocery store, at a ballgame, at a concert with a complaint from a parent or possibly staff person. So we are going to start with Chuck again to, to respond to, how would you respond to a complaint by a parent or staff person? Two minutes. Chuck, you're on mute.
There we go, back to back. All right. It has happened. You know, as a board, we're kind of trained in that, and that's what if situation. Of course, I say, I, I think I'm a good listener. So I would certainly let them know that I would like to hear and listen to their concerns. Ask a few questions about it. Make sure that they have talked with maybe their principal or if, you know, if it's a parent and a parent question to their teacher, then principal, then, then Dr. Rodriguez. If you're still no satisfactory answer, the board would be happy to take up the issue and issues. Same with staff to, you know, please follow their protocols of talking to their supervisor, the principal, going to HR if it's that kind of issue or other cabinet members and superintendent and then us. You know, again, as Leonard mentioned, you know, we have the one employee, Dr. Rodriguez. We're not there to do the day-to-day lifting, but you know, I certainly, like Leonard, I visit schools, talk with folks, just gauge the general atmosphere. And I pass those along to Kenny as I, as I have those visits and thoughts and what I observed and heard. Those are our areas that we often need to improve upon or we have missed somehow. And just, just to follow the, follow the chain. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leonard, would you like to address that? You will be approached, I'm sure you have, with complaints from parents and their staff. How do you address those?
No problem. I actually typed that in. That's why it went away. So it was over in the answer section. Sorry about that. I thought it was directed toward me. But basically, I've done, this has happened to me a number of times. And our job is to listen, make sure that the person knows that we are actually paying attention. But the, the biggest thing is to make sure you push them into the right direction, whether it be talking through the proper chain of command to get to the next level, because everything has protocol. So you don't want to overstep those bounds. So our job is to make sure that we listen and put them in the right direction. And if they're not willing necessarily to do that, if there's continued concern for us to go to that administrator via Kenny and say, hey, this is something that we heard. Do you know anything about it? How do you handle it? And then make sure that that person is followed up with, because that's usually the biggest thing right there. People say something to you and then don't hear anything back. And all of a sudden it's like, well, they don't listen, they don't care. We have to make sure that they, that they're being heard. I believe that's our biggest job. We listen to them and put them in the proper direction to get their issues solved or at least addressed. Because you're not going to solve everything, but at least you can address it.
Thank you. And Cara, board members often face this. They're approached by parents or staff with certain complaints. How would you respond?
Yes ma'am. I think what Chuck and Leonard echoed predominantly, I mean, this is where soft skills come into play, right? So listening, just acknowledging the fact of that you are taking, you know, time out, stop, acknowledge what they're saying. And then, you know, kind of go from there and pointing them in the right direction. I know chain of command is really big in our district. So we need to ensure that they're properly demonstrating that chain of command as well. I mean, because we've all been in a job, right, where you've potentially followed chain of command and you didn't get a response. And that's very frustrating. So I think we definitely have to be open to that. But again, just acknowledging their, their feelings, their emotion, their complaints, and then pointing them in the right direction of where they need to travel. If indeed they've done that, then yes, we need to go chat with Dr. Rodriguez and bring it to his attention as well. So that's how I would tackle that situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So here's one that it's going to be top, it's going to be more top of mind as we go further along. This session, and for this, we're going to start with Leonard. This session, the Missouri Legislature is considering several bills which would affect public education, including an expansion of charter schools, virtual schools and adoption of vouchers. As a board member, how will you advocate for Grandview and public education?
This is where we have to use our networks and get out, use our voice, whether it be talking to parents, fellow board members, when we travel to different training events as we get back into travel. But the biggest thing is using our networks to voice where we are, what we are, what we're trying to do and, you know, what we agree with and don't agree with and try and work through, as Cara mentioned, soft skills and start talking to people saying, hey, this is what's going on. You need to get out there. Right now, we have a challenge just getting people out to vote, let alone look at the actual issues. So we have to utilize all of our contacts, all of our networks, the best we can. And that's not just, like I said, as board members, that's just in general. So I believe that's where that ties in.
Thank you, Cara. To you, would you like me to repeat that?
No ma'am, I'm good. I'm going to echo what Leonard said. He's absolutely right. You know, I'm not a believer in over-communication in the least. So we need to communicate, communicate, communicate. So it's networking, it's getting out there, it's putting ourselves out there. And again, chatting about what we like about it versus what we don't, right? So it's just getting out there and communicating to the public of the opportunities here. I couldn't agree with Leonard's feedback on that more. So ditto.
All right, thank you. And Chuck?
I'll throw my ditto in there also. It's, it is currently a lot of, lot of, lot of things going on in the legislature. We as board members get a, an update from our advocacy groups that are in Jeff City. It's almost weekly right now is, is they're in session. One of the things I use for, for that, read what they're doing, then make phone calls to my representative, representatives and let them know my feelings on what they're voting on. They appreciate it. We have often had those representatives attend board meetings or they have attended board meetings for the Grandview School District. At those times, it gives us an opportunity to talk with them. And I know Kenny isn't, has even more contact with those folks than than we do. Leonard said, you know, advocate for our position, for the position of the school district. And yeah, keep keep informed and and pass it along. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I think we'll have time for two more. And so we'll go to start with Kara on this one. What do you think is the biggest challenge facing the district and how would you address it?
Currently, for me, you know, one of my biggest concerns that I've answered numerous times is just that kind of where the salary is sitting today for teachers and staff in our district. And I know where we have question one and two that we're trying to pass on the April 6 election. But I mean, currently, how the salary, you know, piece works today is just kind of alarming in a matter of speaking. And that's my number one item. And, you know, there's been either freezes or steps not given six of the last 10 years. And so, you know, if we want teacher retention, we want our students to have the best. We want to have the best staff. We want to have the best of everything here in Grandview. I think salary for our teachers is something that has to be number, you know, number one that needs to be identified and turned over so we can keep those teachers and retain those teachers and make sure our students have the best, right? So I think for me right now, that salary for teachers and staff is definitely a big one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And Chuck, what do you think is the biggest challenge facing the district and how would you address it?
That whoops, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm I'm on mute. Yes, keeping our folks in a pay scale that reflects the area that we live in. Of course, East Coast and West Coast folks, we couldn't touch, touch some of their salaries. But again, the board has had a goal for a number of years to keep in the top third in the area. I think we've done a very good job of keeping us there, particularly with with the benefits associated with that, too, to keep those those benefits that are attractive to folks paid by the board. There's a lot of districts that now don't do that. So I think it carries a great deal of weight to have that also to keep our schools, buildings, infrastructure current. Part of the reason we we deferred for a lot of years, 15 years ago, we deferred a lot of maintenance that's caught up with us. Leonard mentioned it, we need folks to have pride in the schools, the students, our patrons and parents. Even the other folks like myself that are now retired and have no kids in the district currently. But, you know, still need, still need and want them to have the pride in the schools that they drive by every day. That's that's up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck and Leonard. What do you think is the biggest challenge facing the district? And what, how would you address it?
I think our biggest challenge is kind of twofold, and that is closing the gap as well as continuing with the progress that we have. It's kind of a double edged sword because the progress has been good. But like I said, it's not where it needs to be. I think as we address closing the gap and continue with the progress, we're going to move forward. And both of those things will happen. We just got to stay on point and make sure that we provide the resources. And as Chuck mentioned, the training needed so that these things can happen. Kenny has made changes in leadership to to get to this point. So we're going through those growth stages. But I believe those are our biggest challenges. And how do we continue to make that happen? Like I said, we hire the right people, that being Kenny right now, and then let him do what needs to be done in order to make those goals reachable and make them happen. And that means, like I say, doing our research so that we know and follow up on the data from the various programs that have been implemented. And that's what we're doing right now. We used to get, I believe it was like every quarter review or something to that nature. Now we're getting them on a regular basis such that we can really guide and look at what we want to happen if it's getting where it needs to be.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this is appropriately our last question for the candidates. And I'm sure you've all had a chance to think about this outside of the the forum. It will be about the ballots, the questions on the ballot on the same night, same day that you are on the ballot. So we are going to start with Chuck. Do you support questions one and two on the ballot and why are we not?
I absolutely support question one and question two. I think we, I think we've all stated our our thoughts on that. One of the things I would like to say that Kara mentioned, you know, folks, get out and vote. Need your votes for the candidates for school board for questions one, questions two. The city's city folk that are on the ballot this, just go around on April 6. Just encourage and ask that everyone get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leonard? I I guess I would say any thoughts on question one and two on the ballot?
I'll ditto what Chuck said. And much like Kenny has said in a couple of his presentations so far, as far as the no tax increase or we haven't had anything in 17 years. This is all going to be a plus for the community, for the schools. I mean, it's a win win across the board. I don't, I don't understand where there would be any difficulty, but, you know, people have their thoughts. So I will say, much like we said earlier, get out and vote, vote what you believe, but get the information so that you can make an informed decision. Because to me, this is a no brainer. This is something that we need that's going to help everybody across the board. You hear people talk about property values and everything centers around the school. These are things that are going to help all of those. So get out and vote, get your information, and let's make it happen. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Kara, your thoughts on questions one and two on the April 6 ballot?
Yes, ma'am. I wholeheartedly agree. They're both outstanding and capital letter yes for me. I can't echo what Chuck and Leonard said. As a community, get out and vote. We need these. Our students need these. Our teachers and staff need these. I have kids in the district. I have a teacher coach in the district. Like, we need this wholeheartedly and we need to get out in strong numbers and vote. Obviously, vote for what you believe in. But to Leonard's point, there's literature out there. Grandview has a great website that has quite frequently asked questions on it. There's literature out there. So educate yourselves and go to the polls, April 6. Thank you.
Thank you all. I believe this concludes my part and our candidates' part of the program this evening. Unless there's, Kim or Kenny, anything else or Vicky, anything else that we should address?
Well, we are going to talk a little bit about funding our school's future. So, yeah, I mean, we can all reintroduce Dr. Rodriguez and Sandy Kessinger. They're just going to give a brief informational update and
First of all, let me just, let me just thank all of the candidates for for coming out tonight and certainly for your willingness and support of the school district. So I think anybody who is willing to donate their time to a school district like this and be able to to really support what we're trying to do in our community certainly is to be applauded. So thank you so much for being willing to even put your name on the ballot. And as Chuck mentioned earlier, you know, there have been times in the past where there just hasn't really been a lot of interest. So I love that there's interest and I love there's individuals that are passionate about our school district and are willing to put themselves out there and to and to make sure that they're trying to be as involved as possible. So certainly want to appreciate that. Yeah, we do have two questions on there. It's always great to hear that there's support from the candidates on that. And and certainly the 60 cent tax levy and and a $45 million bond. So certainly been a long time since we've gone out and even asked the community for this type of increase. We do bonds on a regular basis, but this one certainly is a little bit different with the $45 million bond. And I'm very excited about what's going to be possible moving forward in the future. But I also just want to put a plug in that tomorrow night, we will have a forum that I will be presenting and talking about these two items in a little bit more detail, talking about what really does that, you know, go towards in terms of the 60 cent? What does it mean for you as an individual homeowner? And what could that possibly look like? And then $45 million, wow, that's a lot of money. What what does that really going to change in our school district and what could that possibly look like? And then just answer any questions that you may have. So if you're on and that's something that that you're interested in, please feel free to to tune in tomorrow evening. And we've got a Zoom webinar that's going to be done. And you can get all that information from our website or you can certainly just reach out and ask us. But that will be tomorrow evening. So just wanted to thank everybody for participating and again, for your support through our school district.
Great. And introducing our chairman of the Funding Our Schools Future Committee, Sandy Kessinger, to also say a few words.
Thank you, Kim. I appreciate you're giving me a couple of minutes just to to talk about this initiative, the question one and question two. But my name is Sandy Kessinger and I serve as the chairman of the Funding Our Schools Future Committee and the president of the Grandview Education Foundation. My husband, Don, and I have made our home in Grandview for the last 22 years. Don actually grew up here and he and our three kids are all Grandview High School graduates. I can't remember a time when both the bond and tax levy were placed on the ballot at the same time. So I guess you could say it's a sign of the times. The pandemic has taken a toll on our schools, both from a financial and a staffing perspective. The district realized a reduction in state aid in the last year. And across the nation, we've learned of teachers making the decision to leave the profession, leaving more demand and less supply of quality educators. So the question of the hour is, do we really need both the bond and the tax levy? And the answer is unequivocally yes. The bond funds repairs to aging infrastructures, provides safety and security measures, and funds classroom and restroom enhancements. While the tax levy would fund employees' salaries and benefit packages so that we can be competitive in recruiting and retaining great educators. How could it be, how could it possibly be an either or situation? Both are important. Our kids deserve to have classrooms where the roofs don't leak and they deserve the best teachers. Both are fundamental to a high quality education. The last time we were presented with a tax levy, 17 years ago, all of our kids were still in school. We hope that our neighbors would see the value in funding our kids' educations by voting yes to the levy. Fast forward to today and we are now empty nesters. But voting yes to both initiatives is our way of paying it forward to the next generation as a way of saying thank you to our neighbors who voted yes 17 years ago. Today's students are tomorrow's leaders. A vote yes is definitely a vote for our future. To offer a little perspective, for a home valued at 110,000, the annual tax increase would only be $125. Our Grandview kids are certainly worth that and a whole lot more. I ask you to join me in voting yes and yes on April 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy, very much. And I want to wish the best of luck to our candidates. I hope you have great voter turnout in support of your campaigns. There are also a couple of other people I want to thank and recognize. Both Sheba Clark from the district and Sharon Kinder from our staff have worked very hard to help put this together, promote it, put it out on Facebook, get it on the website and that type of thing. So we really appreciate their work. And earlier, when I introduced my counterpart, Vicky Walgast, I did forget to say that South Kansas City Chamber is co-hosting this with us tonight. So I didn't know if you had any comments. But one thing I wanted to say earlier at a meeting, we were talking about how some of the dynamic has changed, I think, between Grandview and South Kansas City, Martin City. And, you know, I think that's due in large part to a lot of her leadership there. So thank you, Vicky. Do you have any closing comments you'd like to make on behalf of your chair?
Thank you, Kim. And we're just, we're happy to be supportive of this. Obviously, Grandview School District is in part of South Kansas City and we're very supportive of them as they have been very supportive of us. I would just mention, we, Grandview and South Kansas City Chambers, we do joint legislative breakfast. And as everybody on this call is is concerned and interested in education, April 9, we are doing our legislative breakfast and the topic is education. And we're going to have some of our legislators join us and talk about some of those initiatives that were mentioned earlier that are going through the legislature. So would encourage you, there's no cost to join that call. Watch for that information on our websites. Would encourage you to to sign up and learn about some of those things that will have an impact on our school district.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any closing comments? Oh, and thank you, Rachel, for moderating today. We really appreciate your time and your talent and your treasure. Thank you.
You're welcome. You can add trivia to that, too, huh?
That's right, trivia. Rachel's a good trivia planner.
This has been recorded and will be available on the Chambers YouTube channel.
Thank you, Sharon. Any last comments? If not, we're going to get out a little bit early this evening, which is fine. Looks like the winds died down maybe a little bit. We can get outside and enjoy those last few rays of sunshine without our hair being all over the place. So thank you again all for being here. Best of luck. Best of luck to the school district on April 6. And we'll see you at the polls.